Paint factory owned by Harry. 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 Paint factory owned by Harry.
Lauren, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello, John.
Good evening.
Lauren, you know that our video is disabled?
I do. Just give me one moment. Mayor Moore and council members, just so you're aware, we're having a little bit of a technical difficulty with the video feature, and it appears that there's some kind of glitch in our attendees also.
Does this mean I have shaved for absolutely no reason? The vice mayor is outraged.
I would think you could take your outrage to next door.
I could, but I think they already are sufficiently and plentifully supplied without mine.
And has nothing to do with the flag that they put on me?
Probably not, yeah.
Mayor Moore, it is 7:00 PM if you'd like to call the meeting to order, and we will continue to work on the video issue.
Certainly, we can go ahead and do that. Thank you, I'd like to call to order the meeting, the joint meeting at the Cattadi City Council and the Sixth Authority Agency for the former Cattadi Community Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021. Ms. Burgess, would you give us a roll call, please?
Councilmember Harvey.
Here.
Councilmember Sparks.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Vice Mayor Landman.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here, thank you very much. Now, if you all will kindly join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. With the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Ovid, could you give us an introduction of the staff that are present tonight?
For mayor, members of the council, though, myself, Damian Ovid, city manager. We also have Angela Quarter, who's the Director of Administrative Services, Craig Scott, Director of Public Works, the City Engineer. We have Michael Parrish, the Chief of Police, and Noah Howitz, the Director of Community Development, and I would be remiss to also not mention John Focker, our City Attorney.
Thank you very much. Now, I would be looking for the approval of minutes for the regular meeting, March 9th, 2021, and the strategic planning special meeting of March 16th.
Mr. Mayor, this is the vice mayor, I'll second with one correction. It does list me as remote, present remotely for 3:16, but actually I was not in attendance, so I'd be happy to second this with that one small change to reflect my absence.
Thank you. So, we just need a motion, I have a second.
I made that motion, and I accept that change.
Thank you, Councilmember Harvey, so we have a motion and a second, can we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes, thank you very much. And, you know, typically I try to do this earlier on when I think I'm a little bit off tonight. I'd like to take a moment of silence just to recognize those folks that have had issues with the victims of the Atlanta shooting recently, and of course, the Asian Pacific Islanders that have had discrimination issues, et cetera. So if we could take a moment of silence to recognize those, that would be great. Thank you all for your indulgence in that, and now we'll go to announcements. Meeting orientation for new attendees is yours. In accordance with the Brown Act and adopted City Council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the City Council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. Meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The City Council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the City Council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreement with any statement that the City Council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposefully biased. Measure G supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all, and maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at cattadycity.org. Citizens interested in receiving City Cattadi community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixle.com or by texting your zip code 94931 to 888777. It's our top priority to provide you with prompt and comprehensive customer service, and we continue to offer all city services. However, in the interest of public health, City Hall is currently closed to walk in traffic due to the current health officer order. During this time, our services are temporarily transitioning to phone and web-based, as well as appointment by request. Staff continue to be available to answer your questions, 7:30 AM to 5:30 PM, Monday through Thursday. Like always, we love the hair from you, so please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600 or info@cattadycity.org. If you have non-emergency issues, your normal business hours, you can contact us at 707-792-4611. And of course, if you have an emergency, please contact 911. Continued work for updates on the city's website and social media channels available on Facebook, Instagram, Nixle, and Nextdoor. And, do we have an approval of the final agenda?
Mayor, no proposed changes?
Thank you, Mr. Ovid. Now we'll move on to citizens' business. Citizens' business and public comment are consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar or any matter not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matters jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council policy 2017-02, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes and length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person length for any and all items on consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where disability accommodation has been requested. So now we will move on to the consent calendar. Do we have any request to pull any of those items? If not, I would be certainly...
Mayor Moore, if I can interject, we do have a public comment.
Oh, terrific.
Harris Weaver, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. One of the things that I really love about living in Cattadi is how our small little town is so compact, and that I can pretty much go anywhere I need to go, on foot or on bike, whether it's grocery shopping, the bank, the post office, and all that stuff. And of course, in my job as Executive Director of the Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition, it's my job to encourage people to use active transportation. Transportation accounts for 60% of our greenhouse gas emissions in Sonoma County, and all of our cities and jurisdictions have passed climate action plans and resolutions. Twenty percent, no, 30% of trips in the county are under two miles, which is, you know, an easy bike ride for most people. So by now, all of you should have received in the mail a letter from us inviting you to participate as leaders of the city in our Bike2It Challenge, in which we're inviting people to take a pledge to ride a bike, or rather than drive a car to destinations that are within two miles. So I am hoping that some of you, Councilmember Ford has already signed on, will join him and join folks from the rest of the county in taking that action. A couple other things that we have up I want to tell you about really quickly. We are seeking a bilingual outreach coordinator, so if anyone knows an individual or an organization that I should talk to that would help us in addressing transportation inequity, we would love to hear that. Finally, we just participated in the National Bike Summit. Because it was virtual this year, I was able to have my entire staff participate, and one of the highlights was a surprise visit from Secretary of Transportation Pete Buttigieg. And the fact that we now have a bicyclist in that very important role is quite exciting, and I think is going to lead to a lot more funding for bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure projects, which will be great for Cattadi and for all of the rest of the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver, and I just did get that invitation the other day, so thank you very much for that. Hey, I'm sorry, anybody else in the citizens' business, Ms. Ovid? I mean, Ms. Burgess?
For our attendees tonight, just a reminder to use your raise hand icon if you'd like to make a public comment, or if you're just dialing from your phone, dial *9. And it appears that is the end of public comment.
Thank you very much. So, my apologies on that, now we will move to our consent calendar. So unless we have anybody that wants to pull any items, I would be certainly answering a motion on that.
Move to approve, this is Councilmember Harvey.
Second, this is Councilmember Ford.
Thank you, so we have a motion and a second, Ms. Burgess, would you take a roll call, please?
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes, thank you very much. So now we will move, any future agenda items?
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
I would like us to consider looking at our, if we have one, an environmentally preferable purchasing policy. If we don't have one, I would like us to take a look at implementing one. The Waste Management Agency has a model ordinance that is available for us to utilize, so I'd like that to come back.
Thank you, Councilmember Harvey. Mr. Ovid, do you know if we do have one of those?
Policy is more around some type of non-recyclable materials, but it's fairly, it's fairly old. I would say the practice has far exceeded the policy. So, I have talked to Zero Waste Sonoma about their model policy and about getting their template when it's ready. I think they're working on that now.
Thank you.
It is ready now, so would be wonderful. And theirs was outdated also, it was from 1995. So I think it's pretty common that they're a little outdated. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to our regular agenda items, and we have a presentation on SB 1383. And who will be presenting on that one?
So Mayor, I'll step in here real quick. We have Leslie from Zero Waste Sonoma, she's the Executive Director there, who's going to do the presentation, but I just wanted to point out one thing as we get into the presentation that makes us a little different than some other places in the county, is that last year, when we were doing the detailed rate review with Recology, as you recall, the City Council negotiated some concessions from Recology, and those included Recology absorbing the implementation costs of SB 1383, as well as the first year of operations. So, that may be part of sort of the standard conversation in most communities, that there's a cost to ramp up and start implementation of this, but that should not be our case, given the concessions that we implemented. We will, of course, that won't be forever, I mean, we have an initial kind of ramp-up cost that Recology is absorbing, as well as the first year that they're also absorbing, but beyond that, at some point, we will be paying for the program, but just not initially. So, with that, I'll hand it over to Leslie.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much for the introduction. So, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to present on SB 1383, a bill focused on reducing short-lived climate pollutants in California. This is the most significant waste reduction mandate to be adopted in California in the last 30 years. This presentation provides a very high-level overview of the requirements for compliance with 1383. Next. So SB 1383 was passed in 2016 as part of California's larger strategy to combat climate change. The law was designed to reduce climate, to reduce global warming super pollutants like methane, which is up to 84 times more potent than even carbon dioxide. Landfills are one of the largest producers of methane in this state. When organic material breaks down in a landfill, methane is produced and generated. So, we need to move away from landfilling organic waste, and organic waste is food waste, food-soiled paper, and yard waste. So the materials that go into your green bin. SB 1383 is also important because it addresses food insecurity in California. Organic waste compromises 2/3 of California's waste stream, and food waste alone is the largest waste stream in California, roughly 18%. This is when 1 in 5 children go hungry every night in California. Next. SB 1383 is a statewide target that requires California to reduce organic waste disposal by 75% by the year 2025 as compared to disposal in 2014, and also increase edible food recovery by 20% by the year 2025. So I wanted to just restate, this is a statewide goal, not a jurisdiction by jurisdiction goal. So while the regulations take effect January 1st, 2022, jurisdictions and the agency have the plan now so that they can be in compliance by the January 1st date. Next. So I'll just kind of go through the rulemaking process and where we are. So the law was adopted September 26th, September 2016, and there was a two-year informal rulemaking process that actually ended around December of last year. So, the regulations take effect January 1st, 2022, as mentioned, and the state could begin enforcement of those regulations and hold the jurisdictions accountable at that date, although CalRecycle, the agency that's overseeing the enforcement, is working with the jurisdictions. They want to make sure that they're going at this from an education side and not an enforcement side at the time being. So by January 1st... So by January 1st, 2024, regulations will require that local governments take enforcement for compliance of the regulations. And then by January 1st, 2025, the state will review to make sure that they are achieving a 75% reduction of organics disposal and a 25% increase in edible food recovery. Next. There are many responsibilities put upon the jurisdiction. But luckily, in Sonoma County, we have a Joint Powers Authority, which is the agency that I represent. And we will assist and oversee many of these responsibilities on behalf of the jurisdictions. But I did want to review what they are so that the council is aware of what is required for the regulations. So first, jurisdictions are required to provide organic waste collection services to all residents and businesses. This will be an amendment, as mentioned, by the City Manager between the City of Kattati and Recology for these compliance measures. Next, jurisdictions must conduct annual education and outreach to all generators. This is something that the agency and Recology are working on together in conjunction with the jurisdiction and the City Manager. So we will need to also make sure that generators are informed about edible food recovery. Each jurisdiction must plan for adequate capacity for recycling organic waste and edible food recovery. We are going to be hiring a consultant to actually do this capacity study for us on behalf of all the jurisdictions and the region. And then there's also a need to implement or expand the food recovery program. And this may require potential funding to these programs. So we are looking at alternatives to provide funding to expand food recovery. Jurisdictions must also produce certain levels of recovered, or must also procure certain levels of recovered organic waste products like compost, renewable gas and also mulch. So those are requirements. And there's also requirements to purchase recycled content paper, which was referenced in the environmental purchasing policy at the beginning of this presentation. The next role is monitoring and compliance in conjunction with enforcement. So education begins now so that we're ready for that enforcement piece, January 1st. So this includes reviewing a commercial business to make sure that they have organics collection service and that they're following all the regulations. Then there's also contamination monitoring requirements of the contents in the container. This is something that Recology will be doing for their jurisdiction. And there's also been, there's also requirements for reporting that the jurisdiction must maintain records and keep information for their implementation. And we're working with the jurisdictions on a way to manage all that data as well. Lastly, I will be coming back to council to adopt an ordinance or enforcement mechanism as required by the regulations. So that's something that we are developing a model of right now and will be working with the jurisdictions to pass that. Next. Each department within a jurisdiction also will know the impacts of SB 1383. So for example, what we're doing now with all the city councils doing the presentations of introductions, 1383, and then also informing the city councils that they will be required to pass local ordinances. City managers are involved with capacity planning, procurement, just overall planning of the implementation of 1383. Finance and legal will be reviewing enforcement ordinance as well as any amendment to the franchise agreement. Purchasing staff will be central in procuring recycled organic products, including paper. And city park staff may be involved with applying compost or mulch on some land. And the Health Department may be involved with enforcement, although we're still working out the details of that enforcement mechanism right now. Next slide. So the current status of implementation. We are meeting monthly with all the jurisdictions, representative from all the jurisdictions. And actually, our meeting is tomorrow. So that's where we will share with all the jurisdictions that the agency has approved the Model EPP ordinance that they can look at to implement or improve their own. So we are developing a memorandum of understanding between the jurisdictions and the agencies. And this delegates the responsibilities of both parties so that we all have clear understanding of who's doing what. We are also initiating a waste characterization study this spring so that will give us a better understanding of the organics being disposed in our landfill as of right now. We have started the outreach and education to multifamily and commercial entities. So that has been, that was announced last month. We did figure out the procurement of compost or mulch that your city would need to purchase. It's about 2100 tons annually. There is a cost to that, which I'll go over on the next slide. And one of the things we did do is we applied for a two-year CalRecycle Food Recovery Grant. If we are awarded this grant, that will be great for the whole region because that will really help us to expand food recovery and help us meet our food recovery targets for the region. So next slide. So from here on out, as mentioned in February, we did sign out those letters and we're working on the MOU. So this month, we did pass the environmental purchasing policy. We're working on the model enforcement ordinance right now. We are also working on a model edible food recovery agreement. We are currently identifying Tier 1 and Tier 2 food recovery generators for each jurisdiction. I did list within the staff report who, which businesses fall under Tier 1 and Tier 2. And by April, the agency should finalize its budget. So we'll know what, we'll finally have a number of what funding we'll be able to put towards implementation of 1383 through the agency. And then we hope to have the MOU finalized in June. And we'll do another round of letters and education outreach in July. And then October through December, we'll really be working with all the jurisdictions to make sure we're in compliance by that January 1st, 2022 target date. And next. So what we expect by January 1st is we'll have the enforcement ordinance in place with all the jurisdictions that every account will have organics collection. Generators are notified of SB 1383 requirements, the EPP policy in place. And then the enforcement plan also in place. And we'll also have the edible food capacity plan completed by that time as well. So I expect that Sonoma County to be well on its way in compliance by that date. Next slide. I did just want to review with Kattati that there is going to be some funding impact to your jurisdiction. I mentioned that procurement of compost. That is an estimate of $20,000 to $26,000 per year. But there is a way to get a third party to help purchase compost. The reason why that regulation's in place where all jurisdictions need to purchase compost is the state wanted to make sure that if they were requiring organics to be diverted from the landfill, that there was enough markets throughout the state to actually purchase that compost. But Sonoma County is a very unique county in that we don't need to have jurisdictions buy compost because we're an agricultural community. And when we had our own composting facility, we didn't even have enough compost for all the ag demand. So we are looking at a program to find a third-party way to help this. It's new in the state regulations. So we will be forging on new territory to see how we can comply with that. But the state CalRecycle is well aware that this is a situation in Sonoma County. So if we can't figure out that third-party way, I just wanted the jurisdictions to know that the cost of 2100 tons of compost annually is that. There's also the funding requirement for food recovery capacity expansion. Most of our food banks, we know, are at capacity. Well, we'll know the real picture once we do this food capacity study. But there are requirements, if we're at capacity, that we need to expand that capacity to receive more edible food waste from generators. So we would be getting food waste from, let's say, the grocery stores, hotels, event centers, when those come back online. There is staff time. We do meet with your City Manager regularly to talk about reporting and other compliance mechanisms. Also, it was mentioned that there, at some point, there will be a franchise fee initiated for SB 1383 compliance through Recology. And then there's also that enforcement of the regulations, which we're still working out. So next slide. So my colleague, Cincy Tan, who's the Organics Program Manager, and myself are open to answer any questions you may have of these new regulations.
Thank you, Ms. Lukacs. And it looks like we do have some questions from the council. Councilmember Ford?
Thanks. I was wondering if you could explain a little, the edible food recovery, what does that mean? You know, I presume you don't mean if I don't finish my dinner down at the Redwood Cafe, we got to do something to get it off my plate?
Yeah, so it is all regulated through the Health Department and meeting, you know, health codes. But it's excess food. So let's say a grocery store has food that's still edible, that they get that to a food bank so that they can get redistributed out to hungry people. But not your food scraps or not food waste that makes its waste in the landfill. This is edible food at the source.
Thanks.
I don't see any other questions from the council. I kind of had the same question as Councilmember Ford. I was like, what does that edible food recovery program look like? I mean, we've got one grocery store in town. And is it going to be part of covering restaurants, et cetera?
Yes, restaurants are part of Tier 2, I believe. And it's restaurants of a certain size. So a city the size of Kattati, I'm not certain how much food recovery we'll be doing. And that's why we really need to do that food capacity study because we really don't have an idea of the excess food, edible food being, you know, uneaten at the hotel or the restaurant or the grocery store. So that's why we need to do this study so we have a better picture of what's really happening out there. And we will do the study city by city so that you'll have the information specific to your city.
Thank you, Ms. Lukacs. We have Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you. I had a question about the table with the Tier 1 commercial generators and the Tier 2 commercial generators in the staff report. What is a, what is the definition in this context of a food service provider and a food distributor?
Cincy, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Okay, lunch, go ahead.
Sure, yeah, so a food, let's see. A food service provider, I believe, is, I'm not looking at the definition right now, but it's generally like, what's it called? Organizations that are contracted to provide, like, say, for example, catering. And then food distributors would be those big warehouses that, you know, they are the ones that distribute to grocery stores or restaurants. So yeah, those are like the big generators of food. And to answer a previous question, no, it's not any, like Leslie said, it's not any food off your plate. It's not anything like that. It's mostly food that's been untouched. Say, for example, in the case of a restaurant, if there is a buffet, right, and they have an extra pan of noodles, say, that hasn't even been opened, it hasn't been put out for the public, so it's still sanitary, it's still clean, then that food has to be donated. But not anything that is potentially unsafe to consume. That food is not required to be donated. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
And Vice Mayor Landman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Ms. Lukacs, I wanted to ask if you could flesh out a little bit, if we know at this point, I know it's early and not everything's in place, what enforcement and compliance might look like for single-family generators? And I ask that because I know, just from years of watching this, that compliance, existing compliance with proper use of the waste stream is probably one of the number-one problems that you deal with. So obviously, to try and get the compliance required is going to require a big change in how we deal with that and enforce that. So I'm wondering if you have any clarity yet and how the industry will pivot to actually achieve that and what that would look like for the end user.
So you are correct, that compliance is something that we are still working out. It's a pretty big deal because there's a financial penalty tied to this, tied to the regulations. And we aren't an enforcement agency. But we have had several meetings with the Health Department and the LEA, Local Enforcement Agency. And we have since learned that they're really not in a position. They don't have the bandwidth. And I really heard that loud and clear that they don't have the bandwidth to do enforcement right now. So that was our original plan. So previous council presentations, where we did this presentation, that was the thinking that they would take over just that final compliance component at that penalty phase. But they really don't have the ability to do that right now. So what we are thinking is that the agency may become the enforcer. That will be new for us. We are talking to our legal counsel to see how we could even do that. But this would have, enforcement would have to be funded one way or another, either through the agency fee and the agency pays down to the local enforcement agency or the Health Department. Or the jurisdictions would have to pay individually. But at this point, as we work, as we work this through the jurisdictions, it's looking like maybe the agency fee is the right way to go because we want to disincentivize landfilling. The whole idea is to get this material out of the landfill into people's, you know, into people's refrigerators and/or into compost. So the higher the rate of the landfill fee is, the more incentive there is to compost and recycle more. So I don't have the answer yet, we're still working on it, but that's just the direction we're moving towards right now for enforcement.
Well, I feel like we're kindred spirits because states give me responsibility, but no tools or power to enforce it. We often get mandates with no funding to accomplish them either. So we're kind of sharing that a little bit. I think the direction sounds like a good one to enforce. I mean, having a JPA provides perhaps the greatest flexibility that we can have. So that sounds like a good direction to look into, to me. So thank you for sharing that, that's helpful.
Vice Mayor, if I may add to Leslie's answer. So I should say that, you know, at this point, the agency is mainly looking to potentially enforce on the food recovery requirements. We don't anticipate taking on the enforcement for organics collection. So this means like for the curbside bin, if there are contamination in there. That is something that potentially Recology may take on with, so I should back up, I'm sorry. With the regulations of 1383, it is required that route reviews or what they call waste evaluations need to be done on residential and business bins to check for contamination and to make sure that people are actually using the bins correctly. So those route reviews will likely be part of your negotiations with Recology. And that's part of the enforcement and, I suppose, like monitoring. And so in terms of, I should also mention that with the regulations, they specify penalties must be levied against businesses that are non-compliant. But penalties against residents are not required. However, you know, if the City of Kattati wants to levy penalties against residents, you can certainly do that through the enforcement ordinance that Leslie mentioned earlier in the name. So I hope that answers your question.
That's helpful. Obviously, as Vice Mayor, I never want to sit here and say we want to levy fines against our constituents. But I do think it would be interesting, when the discussion comes, how to make this system work the way it's supposed to. Look at what the impact is in terms of not meeting the goals of 1383 of extra costs for a collection with these contaminated collection. Because I suspect that will continue without some sort of strong effort to change the system. It's just something that we, as a public, seem to do, so. But that's helpful, thank you for that extra answer.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey?
Yes, thank you. Leslie, you mentioned that you had talked to the Health Department and that they told you that they didn't have the bandwidth. My question surrounds, why that direction? And if that's the proper direction, is it appropriate that everyone has to abide by this? And as was pointed out by the Vice Mayor, we often get edicts from the state with no money, back them up. If that's the proper place, rather than finding another spot, should we be pushing together harder on that? And are other jurisdictional areas, is that where they're placing that? And would we be doing something different if we... And would we be doing something different if we went down a path of having someone else do it? I'm just trying to kind of figure out that, because the county always tells us they can't do something, so that's what struck me.
Yeah, this is a situation where the LEA is really understaffed. And the reason why, one of the reasons why the Health Department's nervous to take this on is because they're understaffed as it is, and there is a penalty to the jurisdiction if they aren't in compliance with enforcement. And if they're having a hard time keeping up with their current accounts right now and then they take on 1383, even if they add another position, it'd be hard for them to be in that spot, to put the jurisdictions in a bad place if they can't follow through with all the enforcement requirements. So one thing that we discussed is enforcement for food generators is that Tier One and then Tier Two. Tier Two doesn't have to, enforcement doesn't begin for another two years. And so one thing that we're looking at is that the agency will do enforcement for the first two years of the Tier One businesses, which is a much smaller pool. We would likely have to hire an additional staff person to do that. But this is also a conversation with all the jurisdictions that I'll be having tomorrow. So we, and we all hope to move in the same direction. So whatever the plan is, you know, we hope to come up with that together, so we're all doing the same thing.
Okay, because, I mean, we as a city often get these edicts put upon us, whether or not we have the staff to do them or not. So it has to come from somewhere, and it means we don't do something else, but it's not okay. If the county Health Department is the spot where it rightfully belongs, not having the staff is not a good enough excuse. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands up from the council. Do we have any comments from the public that they would like to make on this?
Thank you, Mayor. Checking in with our attendees, please use your raised hand icon or dial star nine from your telephone. And that will end public comment.
Okay. Well, thank you, Ms. Lukacs and Ms. Tan, I appreciate that. Thank you very much, and just we'll move on from there. That'll be an exciting period in time when that comes up.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was going to suggest we move a agenda item, but I don't know that we have any representatives here from the Asian American Anti-Racism Caucus or anything along those lines. Mr. Obed, you have any?
No, nobody's here that represents those organizations that I'm aware of.
Okay, okay, and we'll move on to our 2020 Annual Housing Report to the California Apartment Housing and Community Development.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. I'll wait for the, there, thank you, Lauren. Lauren, I'll let you drive the presentation if you don't mind. So, yeah, as mentioned, tonight's presentation is on our housing, annual housing report presented to the State Department of Housing and Community Development for 2020. Lauren, if you go to the next slide, please. So just a little bit of background, all cities and counties are required to have a general plan, and one of those required elements of the general plan is the housing element. Housing element is essentially an analysis of the community's housing needs at all income levels and identification of strategies to respond to and provide for those needs. They're updated on a four- or eight-year cycle, and Kattari is currently in an eight-year cycle, which is going from 2014 to 2022, so we're in year seven of that eight-year cycle. We're required to provide a report annually to the Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, to document our progress toward implementing our housing element. And this needs to include removing governmental constraints on the development of housing, as well as meeting the Regional Housing Needs Assessment allocation, that's what's commonly referred to as RENA. And just, it's worth noting, over the last few years, there's been some significant changes to housing element, both in the reporting requirements and in the housing elements themselves, so kind of the mandated functions and requirements of the housing element document. Those are identified and summarized in the staff report, and we are moving forward to begin an update of the housing element in the next fiscal year, so the council will see some budget requests to cover the cost of that. And unlike most state mandates that cities get, there has been some funding to help assist with the cost of this in the form of some grants that have come down. The council's seen multiple applications for those grants over the last year or two, SB2, LEAP, and then most recently a REIT grant application, which was filed, we have not heard back on that. But it's worth noting, to date, we have received $220,000 in state funding to assist with the cost. We've spent some of this kind of supplementing our staff to work on some of the state mandates, such as the ADU ordinance, removing some of the barriers to housing, so kind of some of the buy-right elements, and then cottage housing ordinance, which will be coming to the City Council next month in April. And then we're also working on some objective design guidelines, and so we are working on some policy work that we're using that grant funding for, but we are keeping some of it in reserve to help offset the cost of the housing element update, which will begin in earnest, as I mentioned, once fiscal year begins. So with that, we'll go to the next slide, please. So this is Table B from the attached report, and I do apologize for the formatting. As the state keeps kind of piling out more and more requirements, the format's changed, the cells get smaller, and then I will also say, as we get deeper into the years, there's more information that is summarized, so I do apologize. There is a copy of the report, but just to summarize it, in the beginning of this RENA cycle, the state did recognize that there was a downturn in the economy and kind of gave everyone somewhat of a break, I would say, on their mandated housing needs. So our total RENA allocation for this cycle was 137 residential units. I say a break in that, you know, we look better to the state if we are closer to meeting that number. However, the climate and the perspective on the need for housing is definitely different in today's world than it was when this number was allocated, and the future allocation is going to significantly increase, we're anticipating. But as of today, in this cycle, I should say, I'm sorry, as of January 1st of this year, in this cycle, the city has built 100 residential units. So over the last approximately six years, we've built 100 residential units and are doing pretty well in meeting the RENA mandate, with the exception of the very low-income allocation. We were allocated 35 units, and we've only managed to build seven units to date in the very low-income category, so we do have a 28-unit count remaining. And of, staff is confident that we will be able to meet all the other income categories in this cycle, but I do not have confidence that we will get to building the remaining 28 very low-income units. We will build some based on the progress we have on some of our projects, but I'm not confident that we'll meet that number. There is still some significant development interest, but the, once we get these projects entitled, they seem to be stalling out as the folks, you know, seek actual financing to construct them, get some concrete bids on the construction from local contractors, and there's a variety of reasons that are being cited, anything from just the cost of our local labor force to the cost of materials. You know, there's a variety of issues being cited, and we do hope to spend some time trying to dig into that a little bit with this housing element update, because while, you know, I love to listen to all the various reasons developers give us as to why their projects don't pencil, I do feel like we need to spend some time really digging into that and trying to see if we can come up some creative methods or mechanisms to kind of help address that from our perspective. There's a summary, as I mentioned in the report, on kind of some of the various projects, but just I'll touch on a few. So the Kattari Villages project, which was approved out on Highway 116, the developer has indicated that project does not pencil, and they will not be moving forward with it. It's 43 single-family homes and three commercial buildings fronting onto Highway 116, and that's located at the corner of Alder and Highway 116. They have indicated some interest in potentially re-entitling that project as to replace the single-family homes with a large number of multifamily homes. City staff have not seen any movement on that, and as mentioned, the project is for sale, but there was some conversations, I would say, you know, late 2020, but since the beginning of this year, we have not seen any progress on that to date. The Kattari Station project, which I'm sure the council is very familiar with, 74-unit apartment project in Sentera Way, beautiful project, provides a city park, additional parking for that neighborhood. The developer has indicated they have not been able to get the project to pencil. Council will recall that the City Council allocated $750,000 from the Affordable Housing Fund to support development of that project as a 100% affordable project, which would have well exceeded all of our RENA allocation requirements in every income category. And after Bridge Housing, which is a very reputable, very well-established affordable housing developer in the Bay Area, took a hard look at it, there were some changes to some of the grant funding opportunities that affordable housing projects normally rely on, and they were not also able to make that project pencil. They, it's my understanding, have backed out and are no longer pursuing that project, and so it's back on the market. The developer has, the property owner has indicated that they're seeking out affordable housing folks again because they're the only ones who they feel, the owner feels, will be able to finance the project, given the various factors that are affecting the cost and the kind of additional funding sources that are available for those types of projects. And I'll just say, you know, anyone who calls us kind of inquiring about multifamily projects, I always connect those to, and no one's been able to make a deal out of that. La Plaza View, which the council will recall is a kind of smaller mixed-use project right in downtown on the quarter of East Kattari and Old Redwood Highway, or just east of that intersection, I should say. They have not moved forward, but they also have not said they're not going to. What they've said is they're interested in adding some residential units to that entitlement before they move forward with building permits, again, to help the project pencil. One of the things we're hearing is that, you know, even pre-COVID, commercial development was kind of speculative, and there's not a lot of lending going on for new potential retail uses, but housing was very strong, and so folks were kind of looking to housing to subsidize the commercial component of mixed-use projects. And so in this case, I think they're just trying to bump up that number of residential units in order to help offset some of those costs for building out the commercial portion and obviously the whole site itself. There's more details in the staff report, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I'll move on to the next slide. So just to talk about what we've done over last year in 2020, we had two new residence, 20 new residential units constructed, 16 single-family homes, four ADUs, majority of these are coming from the Kessin Ranch project. They were all constructed as market-rate homes. However, as you'll see in some of the notes of the report, if the city or any community could document that some of their market-rate projects will be rented at affordable levels, then you can count those in your reporting. And so we did some research on the cost of rents for one bedrooms and studios in Sonoma County, and we did propose that four of our ADUs count as our affordable housing units. So I guess they're kind of some of the things we've been trying to champion with the affordable by design, smaller homes, you know, real estate's price per square foot, so smaller units, therefore less costly and generally tend to be more affordable. And in this case, we are proposing that those four ADUs be counted as affordable housing units for satisfying our RENA. And just to throw in a comparison there, in 2019, we built seven units. So we have definitely stepped it up, again, it's Kessin, and the Kessin project does have seven affordable housing projects or units that we anticipate being built in this year, 2021, and those will be at very low, low and moderate income levels. So we will get a little bit more progress, but I don't know that we're going to meet the 25 number that we have remaining for very low. We also have Jamie Lane, which I didn't mention, but the council's well aware of that, and we do plan on getting that final map submitted to the county for recordation in the next week or two, which is very exciting because that'll unlock some of the funds from the state and allow the developer to move forward with construction on the site in late spring or summer. Table D in the report is kind of a summary of the efforts that we've been making to implement the housing element policies, and I'll just briefly touch on, you know, we've really made a lot of improvements to our website to share information both about development but also about housing. This has been really critical in COVID, you know, during some of the eviction moratorium issues and just truly trying to get information out there. And then also code enforcement, which is also a critical component of housing to make sure we don't have any substandard housing conditions. We help folks maintain the existing housing stock that we have, those types of things. We also do continue to require inclusionary housing units, as the council's well aware, that's a state of city policy. We're also really stepping up our coordination with regional partners, the Housing Land Trust is one, and staff does hope to build on that relationship to try to improve kind of management of affordable housing in town. And then also with the Community Development Commission, that relationship has kind of intensified as more and more funding keeps coming down from the state. I do have some kind of complaints about how that's been going, but we're working with them to try to improve that relationship and get a little bit more of a two-way street going with the county, and they've been hearing us loud and clear, I think, over the last few meetings, as all the small cities have coordinated in our messaging to them. There's also some more work that we're doing, as we talked about, we have some grant funding to do some of the policy work I previously mentioned, and we do really want to study kind of what some of the impediments are to our cost of construction. And I will mention, the Housing Land Trust and the Jamie Lane Project was the study of a white paper from two UC Berkeley graduate students, and it's actually nationwide, it's a part of HUD, and so it's actually a very interesting read, I'm just getting into it, but I'm happy to forward a copy to the council if you'd like to see, but it touches on all of the kind of constraints to housing development in Sonoma County from a neutral third-party kind of analysis perspective, using the Jamie Lane Project as a case study. So it's really interesting, and if council's interested, I'll happily provide a copy. We do plan on posting that on the website, just to kind of get some more information out there. And then, you know, the things we've been doing are absolutely ADU ordinance and the other policy work, and then you will see some of the engagement with our CPA and our Climate Action 2020 Plan, trying to push forward some of those climate-related and greenhouse gas-related policies, and we've talked about that in the coming budget cycle for next fiscal year, and then obviously the buy-right housing things that we continue to push through, both the grant-funded elements and then to meet the mandates and the policy direction of the housing element. Lauren, I'll go to the next slide, please. So this is just kind of a brief summary of where we're headed, so this, in late this spring, we will get the kind of the final draft methodology from HCD and the Association of Bay Area Governments, or ABAG. There's more background on this process in the staff report, but just to touch on it, sorry for the typo there, but the RENA methodology is based on a set of statutory objectives from the state and local input from all of the Bay Area cities and counties. I think there was 90 communities represented in that. The Housing Methodology Committee meetings, which I participated in directly, kind of as a Sonoma County delegate, we didn't get everything we wanted, but I do think there's a lot of good policy work that did come out of that. Summer and fall, they're going to reset draft allocation for all the local communities that allows formal appeals to be filed if there's those will, those are to be made. Council can direct staff to appeal if they feel it's necessary, staff does not feel it's necessary, actually feel like our RENA number that, as of right now, anyway, is very fair, there's been kind of some last-minute adjustments. Healdsburg and Sebastopol took kind of a hit because there was an equity adjustment that was included, and the goal with that is to provide folks who are in the lower-income categories access to some of these, what they call high-resource communities, so places that have very good schools, very good access to healthcare, and all those benefits of, frankly, communities that have higher resources. And so that equity adjustment resulted in some pretty significant numbers for Sebastopol and Healdsburg. And so that that equity adjustment resulted in some pretty significant numbers for Sebastopol and Healdsburg and some of the other uh more affluent Bay Area communities. Uh but I think Catati's number is very fair. Uh and we'll get to that in a minute. But uh late twenty this year, uh they'll adopt those final allocations and then in January twenty twenty-three, um those housing elements are due to HCD and and we're going to be kicking off an RFP to get that moving uh even prior to the fiscal. And with that, I'll go to the next slide. So these are draft numbers, but it's worth rate. This is the Sonoma County draft allocation. And so you'll see Catati there, Lauren, if you just click one more time, it might highlight the number. There you go. Two hundred and sixty-seven units is our arena allocation up from the one forty-three, I think, uh one forty-seven that we had in the last cycle. So in the grand scheme of things and where we are with our housing needs, that that is a fair number from a staff perspective. Um you could see some of the other communities had some pretty significant numbers. Uh and then if you compare those to where they were before, um there is huge increases from their perspective. And the one that's kind of concerning is the unincorporated Sonoma County number uh because what that's going to force the county to do is to build more housing in the just outside of the cities where there's available utility resources. Um obviously, putting housing out in the middle of nowhere isn't going to work. There's no infrastructure, there's no transit, any of those things. And so what's going to happen is the county is going to look to upzone sites directly around existing cities to take advantage of all that infrastructure to actually support the housing. Um it's yet to be determined where those sites are, but the county is being very forthright and proactive in telling cities what they're pursuing to rezone sites in their individual spheres of influence, so basically just outside the city limits uh and have conversations about those which are just starting to occur. Uh go to the next slide. Uh and with that, it's recommended that the council review the provided information, identify any concerns or direction to staff, and they file the report uh because we need to sub- submit this to the state by April first. So we're just in time. I apologize. I meant to get on the last agenda, but um the report's complete and ready to go and we'd have to hear any comments of the council.
Thank you, Mr. House. Um let's see, Councilmember Ford, looks like you had your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um so no, a couple of questions. So our current housing element is a is a eight-year element. You said it can be either four or eight, I think. So are are we anticipating we'll go for another eight-year housing element next time around?
That's correct. We'll have eight years. The the four-year is essentially a penalty. If if the state finds that you're not doing a good job, you know, as then they kick you to a four-year to to force you to make change a little faster.
Got it. And is it just luck that we're on a like we we do our housing element just after we get a new arena allocation? I mean, that seems like good timing for us.
Uh so the arena um they time it on purpose. So there's there there's a lot of kind of regional planning that all comes together. It's a little bit that's tied to some of the transportation requirements, which are on a four-year cycle, uh but it's some people say it's very well-coordinated between the state, the kind of regional governments and then us uh and and then the state alternates between Southern California and Northern California and able to manage all of that work all at once. So Southern California is ahead of us and that's how we were able to kind of get some of the um reading the tea leaves on where we were headed. You know, obviously separate from just the need for housing in general.
Uh-huh. Thanks. And then a couple of questions about the um unincorporated pressures. Um so first of all, how does the sort of county authority to to permit housing intersect with, say, voter-approved green belts or urban growth boundaries?
Uh so that's a good question. So so the county uh controls the jurisdiction, the land that's outside the city's jurisdiction, right? So uh the green belts are required community separators and and so there there are some kind of mandates on development in those areas. But with the urban growth boundaries, all that is is a limit on where the city can expand to. It doesn't affect the county in the same way. Uh but you can imagine if we have an urban growth boundary, then any infrastructure planning is going to stop at that line, which from the county's perspective is means that they need to be inside that line to take advantage of sewer and water treatment, you know, the main things that are needed.
And so so let's say that happens, there's a there's a parcel outside but but contiguous with our um city limits and that property owner applies to annex and build affordable housing. Does that, do those units count in our allocation or the county's?
So if they were to annex and then build in the city, they would, there there's a couple of different ways. Sometimes the county and the city would share those units. Uh but there's, it's basically in flux right now because the state law's been changing so much. Historically, um in my experience in Sonoma County, uh cities would often allow those developments to go ahead and occur at the county because there's specific rules about annexation that has to be logical extension. If it's not contiguous, then you actually can't annex. Uh so you would have to try to annex a bunch of parcels in between and sometimes those folks might not want to come in. So there's a lot of factors, but uh just say a parcel, like three or four parcels away from the city limits were then to develop under the county, that would likely be close enough to to cover the cost of extending those utilities. LAFCO gets involved. They have to approve both annexations and utility extensions. But there's just going to be a lot of different tensions involved with growth limits, urban growth boundaries, community separators, logical extensions, and then the county trying to meet the state mandate that's been pushed on.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh Councilmember Ford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um I have a small question, a big question. The small question was about the um some of the 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 levels of um the the average, sorry, I'm losing track. The average rent for junior accessory accessory dwelling units versus attached accessory dwelling units. It looked like if I was reading that right, that attached units average somewhere around thirteen hundred a month. Whereas the junior units, which are presumably maybe even smaller, were eighteen hundred a month? Can you explain? I just wasn't understanding why that.
Um you know, those those numbers might have been uh converse, it might have been transposed. I'll have to look into that before we submit, but thank you for for that. I worked with another staff member on putting it together, so I will research that.
I um okay, that was a small one. Thank you. And then the second, uh the bigger question was just relating to Councilmember Ford's question. Um what do you think the commu- I mean, I know you you can't predict this, but just what's your feeling that the communication would look like between the county and the city as they start to look at developing around us?
Yeah, so I, what I would say is um, you know, all of the planning staff in the entire county are very well uh work very well together and are very well kind of um we coordinate well. So we we meet and we meet monthly. SETA facilitates those meetings. Frankly, most of us have worked together our entire careers. So we all know each other pretty well and we're, we can have very frank and and open conversations. Um and what I would say is the county has already indicated that they are starting to identify their sites, that they're going to have to upzone to meet this this allocation that the state has mandated that they meet. And so as they're doing that, they are going to engage with cities basically at the same time that they're starting to identify these sites. The site selection process, as I mentioned, there's a ton of changes. The site selection process has also completely been changed. And so historically, some, you know, the counties or cities kind of would have these set of large undeveloped parcels. They would kind of recycle them through their housing elements. But what the state is saying is, so look, if those aren't developing, there's a reason why. And the point is, we need housing now. So we're not going to let you recycle these same properties over and over again without you jumping through significant hoops to document why we should let you do that. And so what we're anticipating is that that's going to push some to change and you'll have to have new sites identified as housing opportunity sites. Those will then have to be upzoned to allow the density needed to meet the mandate. The county has over five thousand units that they're supposed to build over the next eight years. And so um I hope that answers your question. But basically, I do anticipate a lot of open communication. And then obviously, where the rubber will hit the road is when something is actually proposed and there's some frustration in the different sides of the communities. Uh you know, and it's it's maybe seen a sprawl, even though it's a county development, but it's right on the edge of the city, those types of things. Uh and it's worth noting, the city council also has to approve outside area connections. Uh thank you, uh Mr. Scott, city engineer, just sent me a message uh to point that out. But um it 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 would be a little bit of a political conversation once those those things are coming before us.
Mr. Mayor, if I could make a quick comment about the county.
Absolutely.
Um so so the, you know, the way the way Noah described it, the rubber meets the road when somebody proposes a project on one of the county's proposed sites. But uh one comment I want to make is once once a a particular site is in the county's housing element, whoever owns that land has tremendous rights under the housing element law uh to develop a a project that's consistent with that housing element site language in the housing element. So that I I think the real action is when the county is working on its housing element and is identifying. If if they identified a site outside of Catati that you were concerned about, you'd want to get into the mix at that stage rather than waiting until a development project is proposed. Does that make sense to you, Noah?
I absolutely agree with you and and thank you for pointing that out because a- as Mr. Barker has said, once you are a housing opportunity site designated, that property, it it's the the developers have a lot of rights to develop and there's almost no stopping. So that is an excellent clarification. I apologize for for um not being as as quick.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Vice Mayor Lemon.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, for some years now, really always worried that this strong push for housing from the state um would lead to sprawl. Um and clearly sprawl is an outcome, it looks like, of this, whether it's purposeful or unintended. That looks like this will be a consequence. Um I guess the question I would have is how can we as a city work to protect the voter-approved green belts surrounding our community? Um this was something that was strongly important to the community at polls numerous times, not just here, but throughout the county. And I'm not making the county the villain here. I recognize they've been put in a difficult position by the state's actions. But we can see where this is leading. So I guess my question is, what can we do? Strategic planning around being proactive and thoughtful about where we place resources that could lead to be favorable to annexation in terms of uh roads, uh power, sewer, water, that perhaps in the in the past, we might not have thought twice about. It strikes me without that, um the count, the rural aspect surrounding our community that people value so much potentially is in a difficult place, certainly just as Mr. Barker suggested.
Yeah, I mean, from from my standpoint, the couple of things that that we could do as a city would be, one, if the county does choose to file an appeal, uh which I believe there's at least one jurisdiction uh in our county that wants to file an appeal, one city, and the county maybe as well, um then maybe we could write some letters in support of that. The other thing would be for the city to kind of identify areas where growth would be acceptable that are maybe outside the city limits, but in the county jurisdiction. Um so that way, we could kind of work with the county to lobby, say, what these parcels seem the most appropriate uh areas for growth, given where, because ultimately, an urban growth boundary is where a city could grow to. And so what that could allow is is the county to develop, get the credit in today's world, but then understanding that eventually that will become part of the community. And it's going to function as part of the community, even if it's right outside in a different jurisdiction. So those are the types of things that that we could do, that I could think of right off the bat. There's some other, there's some other things that the state has changed the law on, like we used to be able to partner with the county and kind of share arena unit credits. The state has taken that away. Um and then one final thing, I think Senator McGuire has a has a uh bill, or at least is considering a bill, that would allow units built today to carry through into the next cycle. So if we were to overbuild in today's cycle, let those count to the next because that way um it's just basically a little bit more planning because those dates become somewhat arbitrary, right? Like if we were getting to the end of our cycle and I had a developer pushing to build, I might try to strategize some way to to actually push them later into the into the next cycle so we can get credit. But this, there's also the cycles of the economy that this developer would be trying to target and you would run the risk of missing that and then nothing happens. And so there's just a lot of, a lot of moving pieces there. And and I I think as we start looking at the housing element update, uh Vice Mayor Lemon, that's a very uh important thing that we should be thinking about because we're all every community in this county is going to be updating our housing elements at the same time and identifying these sites that are going to give significant development rights to those property owners.
I see this as problematic because even if we were to, and I would be certainly open to supporting the county and asking for a variance or pushing back on the requirement they've been given, but we know what will exactly happen to those numbers county-wide. If they won't change, they'll be redistributed with the cities picking up more, which leads to a different type of sprawl. Uh so
That's that's correct. Santa Rosa has indicated a willingness to take more units.
And that's a bright spot because there are scenarios where actually this is workable, um much more workable. So I guess, yeah, I have some hesitancy about some of that. Certainly allowing the county to come in and develop areas within the UGB uh that we will eventually take. I don't like the idea of letting the county develop the future of part of our community. What I've seen in the last few years in terms of some of the proposals that have come forward in the unincorporated area close to Catati have been somewhat concerning. So I'm not sure if that's actually an ideal thing either. But in any rate, this is something I hope staff will be thinking about and will all need to work on because clearly we've been put in really a no-win situation here and I think we're going to have to try and find the best best path forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Lemon. Uh Councilmember Harvey.
Uh yes, Noah, I can't remember. So when they're doing that housing element and they identify a property and they're going to change um that property to include it in the housing development, does that owner have to know that you're going to include them or do they just do it and then all of a sudden the the owner finds out?
I've seen it both ways in my career. Uh I will say any land use changes that are proposed in a in a jurisdiction where I am I'm involved, I will, they will be notified. But I have seen cities make significant changes to people's land use and not notify them directly.
Because you could also see where the, you know, a- as was pointed out, you know, the ruralness of the area. There are some people that own property that want their property to stay rural. And so it would be a little concerning to all of a sudden find out that, oh, well, your property changed from rural and now, you know, uh apartment complexes can go there. I mean, that would be a little um, I think frightening to some of these owners, so. There is no um requirement that people are notified is what I
Well, I can't, I can't speak to that because it has been, I would say, over a decade since I've seen that happen. And and I'm not, I'm not aware. There's been so many changes to the state law. Um and and I think even kind of an elevation of best practices. So I I don't imagine that any jurisdiction would do that in today's environment. Uh and there is ri- requirements to notify all residents within a certain proximity as you're making land use changes. Um so I I think it will be more open and transparent in this cycle than maybe ever before. But it will also probably be more controversial in this cycle than ever before because of the required changes. Everybody's going to have to go looking for new sites, including Catati.
Yeah, because Mayor, I have a, I have another quick comment on this too. But that is to say that um uh one unique thing about the sites that are required that under the housing element, they have to be, the sites have to be feasible. So um if if a jurisdiction proposed a housing element site um and the property owner stood up at the hearing and said, this project is never going to happen over my dead body. I own this property and it's never going to happen. Um when it went up to HCD, um HCD might say, that's not a, that's not a feasible site and reject your housing element because the property owner is not cooperative. Um so that that's a risk that a jurisdiction might take if it proceeded ahead without coordinating first with the property owner. But I, like Noah said, I'm not aware of any any requirement that you directly contact the property owner before identifying their site uh as a as a housing element.
Because in a city of our size and bounded by, you know, other cities, it, the properties that are available um are very limited. And without that um approval, if you will, from the property owners to change it, we're we're really very limited. So if, as in the example, over my dead body, you're gonna, you know, change my ten acres into apartment uh buildings. If that's like the only piece of property left, what um what options do we have with the state? what, what options do we have with the state? I mean, we're kind of bounded. It, it's not like we have a lot to be able to stretch out unless we change our urban growth boundary, which people do not want to do. I mean, they, again, renewed that. It's very important to people.
Yeah, so I do anticipate in Kattati specifically pushing to reuse some of our existing sites because they are great sites for housing and they're where we want some housing to go. And other ways you could increase the allowable density in some, in some of the existing parcels. So that may be a way to, to stay, you know, more compact. But land use changes are likely to be required in order to meet the RENA. I'm anticipating a few in Kattati, we're just starting to look at the site selection work, but definitely throughout the other communities in the county.
Yeah, I guess it's unfortunate because folks like living in rural areas and we don't really want to become an LA. People have fought very hard to keep this area rural and agricultural. So that is a little unfortunate.
Vice Mayor Lammon?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I should have brought this up when I was speaking earlier. Forgive me, but just very quickly, Noah, the state's new concern about existing sites and blocking us from using them with the thought that these are bad sites because nothing's coming out of them. Just from the outside, my sense is I doubt if the majority of them are really bad sites. I think it's just the difficulty in funding the sorts of projects, particularly with lower cost and very low cost housing. And this is why what housing we get always seems to be market rent. So I, I'm curious, your take as a professional who's been involved with this much longer, is there really a problem with cities forcing bad sites forward on purpose? Or is it just the problem that we're trying to create housing without a funding source for it?
I, I will say, you know, the communities who kind of have a reputation for being strongly anti-development, they, there, there's no question that some of their sites have been basically undevelopable. That, that is definitely a fact. I would say it's much more the exception than the rule. And I don't feel that it's, it's, any of the sites that I'm aware of in any Sanoma County jurisdiction are that way. They're just, you know, kind of victims of all the various constraints that we all face, you know, whether it's environmental resources that need to be protected or mitigated for, you know, the cost of construction, the average age of a carpenter in California is, I think, 47 years old or something. Plumbers are making $80 an hour, you know, I mean, it's just gotten very, very expensive and very, very quickly. And then we have the impacts from the fires and all those things specifically to us. And it's just, it is a factor, but the state is kind of, I would say, maybe, you know, the pendulum swinging a little far in one way. You know, because some, there are some bad actors out there and the state has sued some of them. You will probably have seen that in the paper. But generally, most communities are not in that.
And I take that, that's a helpful answer and I get the concern from the state's perspective and why they would be frustrated and want to deal with that. But I hope that as part of correcting this over swing of the pendulum, the pushback, a gentle and logical pushback could be this is a problem that needs a scalpel to fix it, not a sledgehammer. And doing a doing this to everybody may well create more problems actually rather than be helpful, rather than just zeroing in on some of the problem areas. Granted, that would be more difficult perhaps to craft the rules necessary to do that, but I think it would really be worth the effort. So thank you for that because I was curious. It did strike me that this doesn't seem logical and I didn't really believe that the greatest amount of sites are truly problematic sites. It's just what I've seen in this decade, it's really hard to build, at least the type of building particularly that the state wants. Thank you.
Thank you. I did have a couple of quick questions. Councilmember Ford addressed the one regarding the UGB. So thank you for that. On Table D, and I don't know if this is something that you're going to be submitting to the state. Section 36, maintain adequate staff. I'm assuming that that was just a typo in there when it said the city has entered an ongoing contract with outside consulting, et cetera, workload staff capacity and this will contract will continue until 2020?
Oh, that is a typo. I'm sorry. Yes, I need to update that. Thank you.
Okay. And then the only other thing I had that hasn't already been addressed was when you talked about the additional four ADUs that we're going to be counting under the RENA housing count. Are there income verification standards for that?
Yeah, so we do not, the, the state does not require us to go and check to see how much an ADU is being rented for. Rather, we can do market research and base, based on average rents of what we're seeing. And I'll just use an example. They, I have heard, HCD has said you can submit kind of a newspaper article or newspaper classified or a Craigslist ad showing this rent as your justification because if it falls in their categories, then that allows them to, and you can document that you're, that you're doing it, that they do let you count.
Are there provisions to preclude things like BMEs and vacation rental?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, if it's, well, if, if in an instance where a home was granted a vacation rental permit, then absolutely not. We, we could not count that. But to your point, I think, you know, if somebody builds a new ADU and we're saying this is going to be an affordable housing unit, but they're actually using it as a, as a short term rental, that would be kind of a miss on our part. But the, the state does allow us to count those as long as we can document that the rent is likely to be within the acceptable range.
And yet the state doesn't give us any wherewithal to substantiate or verify that?
Oh, absolutely not.
No, of course not. Okay. Well, thank you very much for that. I will open it up for public comment if we have anyone that wants to make any comments on this.
Thank you, Mayor, for our attendees just checking in. Please use your raised hand icon. And that will end public comment.
Thank you very much. Noah, thank you very much for that comprehensive report. It's interesting when we have those mandates coming to help in the state and then we have to figure out how we're going to implement those. And of course, you know, I wonder how much of that is taken in consideration with the all the pandemic issues and then what's the future of work going to look like? Are we going to actually need housing up here? There are so many people that are vacating in some of the bigger cities to have more space for home office or whatever it may be. So it's going to be interesting on that. Thank you for that.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Sorry. Noah, I just wanted to say, yes, I definitely wanted to see that white paper if you could send that out. And also I really appreciate you saying that you were interested in looking at ways that we can, like really examining what the, why these projects aren't penciling out. And just if you could, I would love to be included in whatever you find out.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, we're, we're gonna, the goal is to actually spend some of our grant money hiring consultants that this is what they do. Because we have, the amount of effort it took to get Jamie Lane done and the amount of time, we'll never mill ourselves out of this problem if that's the example.
Yeah.
So we, we need to get at least a good knowledge base so we can start making good decisions. Absolutely.
That's awesome. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and this is probably obvious, but this would be a council discussion, you know, when we start, when we have some results to start discussing.
Thank you. Okay. Next we have the resolution that supports solidarity with the Asian American Pacific Islander communities and denouncing anti-Asian racism and violence. Did you have a presentation on this, Mr. Obit, or were you just looking at me to read that?
No, thank you. I'll just do a quick, just a quick intro to it. So a little bit of backgrounds, this, the proposed resolution in the packet tonight is very, very close model to a template resolution that Santa Rosa JC, their board recently adopted. I think specifically the most, you know, the most obvious example that triggered that was the shooting in Atlanta that, that killed some Asian Americans. And it was unanimous, the JC board unanimously passed that resolution denouncing Asian American violence. And and put a call out to other communities to help support that call and raise awareness of the issue. And so the thought was is that this item tonight, you know, we can do a small part perhaps in addressing the impact of violence and harassment against Asians by just raising awareness through this resolution officially and publicly. So with that, I would, that's really all I wanted to introduce it with. And I'd be, I'd be glad to answer any questions if you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Obit. Councilmember Ford?
I'm fully in support of us adopting something like this resolution. I just wanted to point out that the first two whereas clauses contain content, content that's specific to the, to the Santa Rosa Junior College. And actually, the first two whereas's need to be adapted to fit the city of Kattati. They currently contain quotes from the adopted values of the Santa Rosa Junior College and the mission of the Santa Rosa Junior College. So I've got some proposed change after, when we come back for comments after public comment, but I just, other than those two, the, the rest of the resolution is, is, I mean, the SRJC has been changed to City of Kattati throughout and other, some other appropriate changes have been made. But the first two whereas's, I, I think still need to be changed.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. Any other comments from the council? Councilmember Sparks?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say thank you for putting this together so quickly. And I just think it's so important that we denounce racism publicly because there are people in our community who are experiencing anti-Asian American racism day to day. And we all just need to stand against it as strongly as possible. So thank you for putting this together.
Thank you, Councilmember Sparks. If I don't have any other council member comments or questions at this time, I will open up for public comment and then come back and address my notes on the resolution.
Thank you, Mayor Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Sparks. You have another question?
Sorry, I was muted. That was a legacy raised hand. I put it down. Sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Burgess.
Marjorie Crump Shears, go ahead.
There, all right, here I am. I am so glad that Kattati, our city council, is addressing the anti-Asian racism and violence. There is violence going on against other groups of people as well. I want to read something that I just saw from an organization that I'm a part of. It's the Playwrights Foundation in San Francisco. And their statement is this. Racism is violence. Exploitation is violence. Disinvestment in communities of color is violence. Dehumanization of sex workers is violence. Racial fetishation, ugh, I murdered that word, is violence. White supremacy is violence. Silence is violence. Speak out, take action. Thank you for speaking out.
Thank you, Ms. Crump Shears.
Loriann Barber, go ahead.
Hi, this is Loriann Barber and I also just want to thank the city council for taking up this issue and speaking out quickly to denounce anti-Asian racism and violence. Of course, we should denounce all racism and violence and, but I'm, I'm particularly glad to see this being raised at this time and want to support it strongly. I sort of threw together a vigil on Sunday in La Plaza Park for the people who were murdered in Atlanta. And about 60 people showed up. They, they weren't all from Kattati. They actually came from all over the place. So this is an issue that I think is important to local people. And so again, thank you for putting this on your agenda and I support it.
Thank you, Ms. Barber. And Ms. Burgess, would that be in on public comments?
And that will end public comment.
Thank you very much. I'll bring it back to the council in reference to language on that, that we might want to look at that resolution. Is that something that we want to edit afterwards or do you want to go ahead and make those edits at this point?
Well, I'd be happy to propose replacements for the first two whereas's. And if, if they're okay with everybody, we could make them. I think, I think it's problematic to pass it as is because of those quotes directly from the Santa Rosa Junior College mission and values, which are, I, I want to repeat what one of the public commentators said about, I really appreciate how quickly Mayor Moore and City Manager Obit got this on the agenda. I know it came through just as we were getting ready to publish the agenda. So thank you for doing that. But, but, so I'm happy to read some proposed replacements for those first two whereas's and see if those work for people.
I think you are more than welcome to take a stab at that, Councilmember Ford.
All right. So the first one, which is about values, possible replacement is, whereas the city of Kattati values many forms of diversity among its, among its residents and visitors as sources of strength, creativity, perspectives and insight. And and I'm happy to find some way to get this to city clerk to get the language in. Whereas, and for the, for the second one about the mission, we don't have a, a mission that I can find, an adopted mission that I can quote from. So this is not a quote. This is a statement that is actually paraphrasing some things that are in an adopted vision, the vision for Kattati. Whereas the mission of the city of Kattati is to provide for an excellent quality of life, opportunities for economic development and a welcoming and safe environment for all of its diverse residents and visitors. And my proposed replacements for the first two whereas's.
Any contributing comments from the remainder of the council on that?
I was just going to add that we do have, as Councilmember Ford pointed out, we do have a vision statement that's, that's adopted. The second whereas, perhaps it would just say the vision of, you know, to be more correct.
In my version, I replaced mission with vision in that second one.
Vice Mayor Lammon?
Yeah, if there's no further comments, I'd be happy to move this resolution with the edits made by Councilmember Ford as well as Mr. Obit mentioning using vision. That appears to be amenable with everybody. I'm seeing nodding heads. So I'd like to move a resolution in support of solidarity with the Asian American Pacific Islander communities and denouncing anti-Asian racism and violence.
A second motion?
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Ms. Burgess, could you kindly do a roll call?
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lammon?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes, thank you very much.
And before we move on to the next item, Mayor, just Councilmember Ford, if you wouldn't mind forwarding that language to the City Clerk and myself, that'd be great. Thanks.
Will do.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to our City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. All right, so quick, put up the, as you know, the county vaccination program continues to transition to the state contractor, Blue Shield, and some management. We're currently in, continue to be in Phase 1B Tier 1, so that's over 65 ag and food manufacturing restaurant workers. A recent addition is an expansion to include anyone ages 6 to 64 that have, use that make them more susceptible to adverse health effects if they contract COVID. Vaccination rates have picked back up, but appear to just continue to be constrained by the supply available. We do continue to be in red due to the cases per 100,000, which is now at 5.6. We need to be at or below 4 to get to orange, but we are on a slow trend downwards. And the positivity rate remains very low, so well within orange. At the federal level, the 1.9 trillion COVID relief bill is now law, I think as everyone here knows. And on our website and also being pushed out for the Chamber of Commerce, there is a lot. And I would emphasize a lot of small business assistance becoming available in addition to approximately 31 million in rental assistance and also utility payment assistance from prior, even prior legislation, not even the current legislation, that the county plans to make available by the middle of April, if things stay on track. Projects, the West Sierra Avenue Safety Project, contract documents are being processed. And kickoff, the kickoff meeting is expected next week with construction start mid-April. It shouldn't take too long. It's a fairly straightforward project. It will install a three-way stop at the intersection of West Sierra Avenue and West School and also crosswalk improvements at West Sierra Cypress. The bid documents for the Community Center re-roof and window replacement project are nearly complete. And so the project, that project is expected to bid next month with, with the results of that coming to council. And if, assuming the council authorizes the contract, tentatively under construction in May. Again, as I mentioned last council meeting for water, this year, we're still in a dry, very dry year based on the record of rainfall. I think it's the third driest year on record. And so the city, like all the cities in this region are promoting it's a dry year, Save Water With Us campaign. And even in spite of these recent rains, as of March 18th, Lake Mendocino was a little under 50% of its target water supply level. And Lake Sonoma was at 63% of its target water supply level. So the, and our own website, there's often a Summer Marine Water Saving Partnership website, which has water-saving tips if anyone is interested in knowing what they can do to help save water. Also, I did mention at the last council meeting at this time that the local roads and safety plan website was up, technically up right at that time. It, it is live, and the link is on the Public Works page of the city website. And I know that we are working on pushing that out widely on headlines in social media. I think they're just trying to pull together the content for those posts, so stay tuned. You should hear much more about this soon. On community, in the community development realm, cottage ordinance, cottage housing ordinance was was approved and recommended by the Planning Commission, and so the council will be seeing that soon. Also, they had an initial, an initial workshop on the objective design guidelines for housing. So the Planning Commission, there was a lot of discussion about the objective design guidelines, and I think there will be a lot more discussion at the Planning Commission level before, and a lot more public comment taken before we move that forward. But anyway, that continues to occur. Just a reminder, again, another reminder from the last, the last meeting, the city will be hosting one of several drop-off sites in Sonoma County sponsoring, or sponsored by the DEA. It's a prescription drug drop-off. Since a lot of lobbies have been closed, these, these prescription drug take-back programs haven't had a lot of outlets. So it's a good opportunity to, to try to collect a lot of those drugs and get them out of people's homes so that they aren't flushed or thrown in the garbage. This drop-off day will be Saturday, April 24th, 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. at the Community Center. It's a drive-through drop-off. And then, one other thing I neglected to mention, but I wanted to point out was the Groundwater Sustainability Agency, their guide is supposed, supposed to launch tomorrow. And this program provides property owners with private wells and opportunity to review and update water use information. There's a chance mailers will be sent to property owners without wells, and in those cases, it's helpful to return the mailer, indicating there's no well on the property. So there are some properties within the City of Cattati that do have wells. So those, if those mailers go out in the next two weeks, some people may be getting those, so it's just a heads up on that. And then finally, recreation. This week, we are currently hosting our sold-out Camp Cattati Spring Break Camp. This week is off, is off to a great start with campers playing games, making crafts, doing science projects and more. And we're excited for a fun-filled rest of the week and look forward to continuing campus this summer. This coming Sunday, we will be hosting our Bunny Brunch To Go event. And this drive-through event will allow registered families to come get a pancake, egg, and sausage breakfast to go, goody bags with stuffed eggs, and craft kits for kids, and a chance to take photos with the bunny. And our bunny helpers are all very excited to see everyone who's been working hard to create a fun environment for all attendees. And they're still available online to preregister if you would like to go. Pre-registration is required. And so, hold on, I got some bad puns on this one. But next April, or I'm sorry, next Thursday, April 1st, we will be delivering bunny grams around Cattati to those who've signed up. Each gram will include a basket filled with a dozen pre-filled eggs with candy and other goodies, a small stuffed animal stickers and more. We are excited to hop around town. So give us a quick wave if you see us, so you'll be seeing some people around delivering these with bunny ears on. And there are, there are a few baskets still available, so sign up on our website to secure one for you or some bunny you love. That's, sorry, that's the last one. Stay tuned for more events and programs coming back next month. And we're also excited to announce the return of Zumba Gold in Akito, as well as continuing children's theater programs. And we're also expecting to start up Drive, Drive and Movies soon and bring back the community yard sale this spring. And then lastly, in the park news, the Cattati Park Playground Survey should be live tonight. So if you missed our community workshops but would like to see what playground options we are considering, check out the short survey we'll have available on our website and social media pages. So we look forward to continuing the playground update, update process and appreciate the community's feedback. And lastly, as always, if you have any questions about recreation programs or events, you can contact Ashley Wilson at 665-4222, or A. Wilson at cattaticy.org, or of course, always on our website and the city's Facebook page. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Obit. It does look like we have some questions. And I would invite all of my fellow councilmembers to let out a big groan if you'd like. Welcome to do that. And Councilmember Sparks?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Damian, I noticed the bunny grams on April Fool's Day. Is there a prank version of the bunny gram that we can send out?
That's an excellent question. Well, they are going to ring, ring doorbells and run, is what I hear, right? So, I, although supposedly there are limited baskets of goodies.
Thank you, Mr. Obit. It does not appear that there's any further questions at this time. Now we can move on to our City Councilmember reports. Councilmember Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few. Damian already mentioned the guide program from the groundwater sustainability. In addition to that, they will be doing the focus groups. I pushed pretty hard to have an additional focus group for our Santa Rosa Basin since we had the most wells, the most surveys returned, and the most interest in being part of a focus group. So hopefully, the consultant has gone back to try and figure out how to make that happen. But it was agreed that we really don't want to turn away people that want to help guide that, so. Secondly, I attended the first education meeting that we had. It was a great meeting. It was really more of an introductory meeting, so everyone could greet one another and meet one another. And we introduced our backgrounds and things like that. And we will start meeting regularly again, which is, I think, great. Everybody was pretty enthusiastic about that. So I think that that, that'll be great. Then I attended a meeting with Senator Dodd. He spoke to all the folks from the North Bay Division, and he had like a whole list of bills and things that he's actually working on. But he spent a good hour with us, which was wonderful. And lastly, I attended the Sonoma County Waste Management Agency meeting. I already asked for the environmentally preferred purchasing policy. We approved a draft budget. And one thing of note that I want to make sure that people are aware of is that with the treated wood waste and the laws that went into effect and the ability to dispose of that not being available, the Waste Management Agency will be having an event. It is scheduled for 4/25 at Luther Burbank. They are not charging. The agency is going to pick up the fees to dispose of that material. Sign-up will be required, and there will be only 160 slots. So, and then depending upon how that goes, they may do another one. But until that gets kind of squared away better, it's not really feasible for people to have to go as far as they would have to go to get rid of that. So that's really good news that we're going to be able to hold those events until that gets squared away. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Councilmember Harvey. Any other councilmember reports at this time? I have not seen any hands up. I do have a REMF meeting coming up on Thursday, the 25th. Quite a few items on there. So we'll report out after that. I do want to indicate that I was very proud of our participation in the recent press release, live video feed that the County of Sonoma held yesterday in recognizing some of the racism and the support of Vice Mayor Elwood in Ren, in Warner Park and, and supported the Asian American Pacific Islander community. So that was a nice event. I thought the participation by our council and the support for that was very good. So I don't have anything further to report out on that. We can open it up for public comment on non-action agenda items, if we have any attendees that are interested in speaking on this that.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. I'll check in with our attendees.
Thank you.
And it appears there are no public comment.
Thank you very much, Ms. Burgess. And do we have any information received after the agenda was posted?
Nothing further.
Thank you so much. I don't have anything further to add. I thank you all again and look forward to our next, I think we have a budget study session coming up before the next council meeting. Is that correct? I don't have the dates in front of me.
No, I believe our next council meeting is the 13th of April, and then the budget study session, I believe, is on the 20th of April.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you all very much. I look forward to seeing you. And if I don't see you in the meantime, have a very nice holiday and be safe out there. And we will adjourn the meeting at 8:52 p.m. Thank you so much.
Good night.
Goodbye, all.